Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. I have five o'clock by my time. I will now, excuse me, I will now call to order the special meeting of the Federal Way City Council for May 7th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, this, we've got a study session this afternoon, and we'll have Brian Davis, our city administrator, talk. This is a study session, a city council discussion regarding a proposed joint Citizen Commission briefing. And I will immediately turn it over to Brian Davis. Brian?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. All right. As the mayor said, this is a special council meeting to discuss the idea of having the commissions meet together.
Recording in progress.
Start again for the record. This is a special meeting of the city council to discuss the possibility of the commissions meeting together in a joint meeting. The purpose of this meeting, again, so we got an idea or request from a few members of our city commissions to have a joint meeting. And so that's what we're here discussing today is determining if that should happen or not. Here are our 14 commissions and their membership numbers. The commissions are set up for various reasons. Some are required by law, others are local preference as to what the community wants. A couple on that note, the lodging tax advisory, for example, they administer the lodging, the hotel tax that the city collects, and there are rules along with collecting that tax and dispersing those funds. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, is charged with helping decide where that money should go, along with the council. Planning Commission is another one that's set up by statute. That's a requirement that all cities have an advisory commission or committee that advises the council on land use matters. And so the others, there are others that are required. A lot of these other ones are local preference. But that's the, that's our current makeup of commissions and the number of members. I didn't indicate on here how many, there's a few other commissions that have alternate members, but with recent changes in the rules, we indicated that if you're in the absence of a voting member, an alternate can step in to vote. So this, these are the voting seats on each commission. The one exception would be the Historic Landmark Committee. That is a, that's a, that's a King County Committee. And how that's formed is various cities in the county send a representative of the city to sit on that committee. And when a proposal comes before the committee to consider for either a special local landmark or through a formal national registry landmark designation, then that, that council, or excuse me, that county committee is the one that administers that. Okay, the city commissions, and a lot of this will be a review for, for many of you, but for the sake of those who aren't familiar with it, the city commissions are created by the council to serve in an advisory capacity and to make recommendations. So none of them make final decisions. They're all recommendations to the city council as the governing board of the city. The council makes commission appointments based on the interviews that you conduct with the candidates and also based on their background. So for instance, we were looking at the previous slide here. The keyboard's not working. Anyway, so someone who's interested in, say, the, the parks of the city, you would interview them based on what they enjoy about, you know, the park amenities of the city. And they may not be ones that you would invite to sit on, say, an independent salary committee or one of the other committees that, that you would interview for. So you're interviewing for the unique background and expertise that they bring to the city commission. The work plans of each commission are approved by council. You typically see those in the fall in preparation for the next calendar year. Doesn't always happen, but that's what we aim for. So in the fall, you see the commission work plans, you approve them. Those work plans are then supported by the budget, the overall city budget that you approve on a biannual basis. And then the staffing needed to support that work plan, to accomplish that work plan. The city budget, again, it supports the commission work depending on the function and the purpose of the commission. I've got two extreme examples here. As I mentioned before, the LTAC or the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, they are, along with the council, responsible for, again, dispersing the hotel tax. That's, that's their main job is to look at that tax and then disperse it appropriately for those activities that would be more of a tourism nature to attract visitors to the city and hopefully directly or indirectly cause more people to stay in hotels such that that fund is then replenished by the activities that this tax then funds. The other extreme is planning. Again, it's a, it's a commission that's set up by statute. Tremendous workload by the Planning Commission, especially this year of all years, but in any other given year, they're very busy on administering land use matters that are required of the city. The Planning Commission does not administer money or they don't have a budget to do that. Now, there is staffing to, to help with those plans, and we, we seek grants to help out because, because planning is a very expensive activity. But the commission itself doesn't administer any of the other funds needed to bring forth a Comp Plan Amendment proposal, for example, or any other kind of planning proposal for the city. Okay. Okay, so here are some of the reasons that we received for the commissions to meet jointly. They wanted to share goals and purpose. They wanted to share work plans and the dates of events, share needs, resources, and accomplishments, coordinate budget needs, be ready to request funding from legislature and other funding sources, coordinate calendars, find consistency with the, with the Zoom option for commission meetings. And then some commissions have had retreats, others have not. So there's a question on what, what those are and should every commission have a retreat. Some of, just some responses. I think a lot of this could be handled with, with mere staff coordination or questions to the council. Shared goals and purpose. Staff can certainly provide those, the goals and purpose of other commissions if a commission is curious. If there's work plans or dates of events that need to be coordinated, we can share that through a commission calendar. It's definitely something that we could put together to coordinate events so that they don't, you know, fall on top of each other. Sharing resource needs and accomplishments. Again, this can be, we can, we can look at this on a case-by-case basis rather than an ongoing joint meeting to, if that's what we're trying to, to get across. To coordinate budget needs. So the city budget is, there's no commission budgets. I mentioned earlier that, like, for instance, the LTAC helps to disburse funds. That is their specific purpose. There's no other commission that has a purpose to, to spend money. There's, there is city budget, again, that the council approves to, to support the work plan, but it's not within the commission purview to then decide on how to expend those funds. That's a, that's a staff function primarily as the executive branch of the city. So there's, while there are budgets, for example, just looking at, this is the commission list here. Go back to the, this list. So I think, I think arts has, there is some budget, city budget that they, that helps with, with the arts. Diversity does have some money to help with some of the events that they plan, with the MLK event and the Federal Way Festival. And anyway, those are, those are two examples that come to mind. Parks might, I don't, I don't remember.
Senior advisory has.
Senior advisory, okay, thank you. Okay, other reasons to be ready to request funding from legislature. So we, we pay a lobbyist specifically to do this, and we meet with them on a regular basis to identify grants that we, that are the most likely that we would be able to secure as a city. We go to great lengths to identify which ones are, that we match up with well. And we, we try to stay on top of those. The, the function of the Citizen Commission is not necessarily to, to do that, although certainly if they have requests for us to go after a grant, we can certainly look into that and see if it is worth, if we, if we qualify, first of all, and then if we do qualify, if it is worth, if it's worth applying. As I mentioned earlier, coordinating calendars is not a difficult thing to do. We can do that and be better at than we have before. Since there's a request to do it, then there's, there's apparently a need to, to coordinate better from, from a commission event standpoint. Zoom consistency, there's, there's, this is really a preference of, of the each commission. The council policy on Zoom, we talked about it, the retreat, Zoom is allowed. And so it's just a matter of if they want to do that. It's, there's not a consistency requirement. So some commissions want to be in person, others want to do hybrid, and that's fine. And then retreats, as I mentioned before, there have been some, some commissions that have gone on retreats. These are, these are double-edged swords. I'm speaking from an operations manager as your administrator for the city, because they often tend to then introduce things that go beyond the approved work plans just because they are coming up with so many great ideas, and they're not pacing them out within the, the calendar year to, to, to get done. So it's not, also the staffing for the treats isn't really contemplated in the budget, but it's certainly, it's, it's something that, that can be discussed. So questions that, that we would have of a joint meeting and the questions for the council's consideration, if you, if you wanted to move forward with this, is what would be the purpose? And we kind of went through some of the, the reasons why that we've received. So identifying the purpose of the meeting, I think we would need to refine that a little bit more. If it's going to be an ongoing meeting, then how frequently are we doing this? Is it, is it monthly? Is it annually or somewhere in between? What are the action items that we can expect at, at, when we're done with the meeting? What, what can we expect to do as far as action items? And then what is the, often with action items, there's a budgetary impact with that. And so what would that, what would that look like? And, you know, is this, is this going to end up in an additional budget ask of the council? Who sets the agenda? Who runs the meeting? Who staffs the meeting? These are all known questions, especially as we're getting into meeting as city commissions. You can't really restrict the public. And so there is a high likelihood that we're going to have a quorum of any given commission. So if we just say, well, we're going to have three members of such and such commission and no one else is assigned to be there, we can't restrict others from coming because then, again, it's a public meeting. So if we then have a quorum, then how does that work from a coordination standpoint on running the meeting, staffing the meeting, and so forth? Is, you know, is it, I, I don't think this is the request to have all commission members there, but let's just say for the sake of argument, what that's, this sort of, this idea evolves and we're, we're to the point where we're requiring all commission members to attend. What does that look like? And then if they do, that's over 100 people with a, with a quorum, several quorums in attendance. So how does that exactly look from a meeting management standpoint? And then I just, then we come back to the idea of what, what's the, what's the intent behind this? Or what are we trying to accomplish? And is there a different way that we can accomplish this end goal? Is it a meeting just to have a meeting? Or is it a meeting for a specific end goal? And if there's an end goal, then let's look at that end goal and see if there's a different way to, to achieve that, which, again, as your operations guy, that would be something that would be worth looking into. So the options would be to allow the joint mission, excuse me, allow the joint commission meeting, but we would need direction on what that looks like from the council. So we'd need the direction on the purpose, scope, timing, frequency, meeting leadership, agenda setting, staffing. I didn't include budget, but that's certainly a consideration. And then the other option is to, is to continue to sustain commissions through approved work plans, budget, and current staff report. Now, there've been some great suggestions through this. As I mentioned, the calendar, having a commission's calendar. We do have a meetings calendar already, but a lot of our commissions are tasked as part of their work plan with planning and executing events throughout the, throughout the community. And so it'd be good to have a, a calendar that then everyone could look at and say, you know, here, you know, this commission is doing this on this day, this other commission is doing that on that day. And if there needs to be some, some partnering in the meantime, that certainly could happen, but not necessarily in a joint meeting for all commissions. So I think that's the end, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, before I open it up for a, a public comment, I've got three pink sheets so far. Let's, let's have a couple of quick questions. Brian, if there are any before public comment. Councilmember Sephard Dawson?
Yes. Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. And I do appreciate the fact that commission members are willing and want to meet jointly. And you did ask a lot of questions about the frequency, all that would come into play. But I do support this idea. One, because these commission meeting members don't even know each other. They don't know what one or the other does. So I think it'll be a great space for them to get to know each other, to work together, to collaborate on projects or events that they are, are doing. For instance, the Diversity Commission has an event coming up. Senior Advisory Council has a, I mean, committee has a, an event coming up. So I think this would be a space for them to come together and see how they can coordinate or get support from the other commission members or committee members. Also, I don't think, and this is just my opinion, that we need to worry about quorum being present because I don't see any actions being taken at these events. I just feel like they're for information only. Just like here at study session, we don't take any action. And so I see that to be a place where they can gather and just ask questions maybe of the council, of staff, and/or of each other. So I really see it as a positive way to get people, communities to come together. And so whether we have six people or all 100 show up, I think it's, it's a good direction, good, good forward momentum to get these community, people who serve the community in that capacity to come together and, and meet and greet and talk and, and support each other and feed off of each other. So I really support the idea, and thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll come back to the quorum issue. We're going to ask Ryan here in just a few moments. But Councilmember McDaniel?
Well, my actual question is on the quorum, is the quorum question. So since it's going to pop up to you anyways. I know quorum is 51% of the voting group in a place, but like she was about, like she had mentioned earlier, does it matter if they're voting or just not voting, if they just show up? What is the, the restrictions on having a quorum of people together if it's outside of a voting matter?
Right. So it's any time business is being conducted, the, the business of the city. So that's not just voting. That's discussing any topic of relevance to the city, any topic that will inform a later decision by council. So all of these meetings would have to be noticed as open public meetings. And if there is a quorum present, we'd have to note that, either a potential quorum or there will be a quorum.
So if we assume a quorum at all times, then we just have to follow the open?
We'd have to notice it as an open public meeting, just like we do for, a good example is this meeting. We notice this meeting. We don't typically take votes. There's maybe a vote today in this special meeting, but generally there's no votes. But we still notice them because they are required to be open public meetings.
And what about the impact of council presence?
Same thing. So if a, a majority of council is present at any one of these, it would be a council meeting at that point, or a potential quorum at least. And we would need to think about how we're going to handle that.
And if a quorum of the city council is present and they're conducting business, isn't there a statute about who runs that meeting?
Yes. If we're going to call it, if it's a council business and council's participating, then yeah, it's a council meeting.
But what if they're present and just in the audience?
Not necessarily a council meeting at that point. So we would, we would notice it. That actually comes up quite a bit in community meetings, the, the chamber and other places where a majority of council might be present. So we just note it as a potential quorum. And that's how we handle that. But yeah, if council is sitting up here in the role of council and there's an agenda, then of course, the mayor would, would chair that meeting.
All right.
And chairing, that's a big question we have as staff is, how does this look? We don't, it's one thing to have a meet and greet where people just are in the room, there's no agenda. That's an easier thing to do. But if we're having a, a formal meeting with someone chairing and questions being asked, then someone's got to chair it and there needs to be an agenda. And then we need to figure out how we're going to create those things.
So if it's actually chaired and there's actually an agenda to discuss and, so if they come in and it's just an open discussion of, hey, we're here to present what we've got going on, that's different or is that?
No. Presenting implies an audience and a presenter. So if it's just a group of people talking, like, like we have, like the meet and greet with the, the council members at like a coffee shop or something like that, where there's no formal agenda, it's just people talking, that's not a meeting necessarily, and we can handle that easier. If it's, I think what's being asked for here, though, is a formal meeting. We've, I've seen at least one draft of what agenda might look like. So that's, that would be a meeting. So we would have to answer all these questions.
And that's actually what, what prompted this, this meeting. We received an agenda that was produced by a vice chair of one of our commissions, not the chair, but a vice chair, and of one commission. And it dawned, it immediately brought up 10 different issues about who runs it, who sets the agenda, what's the purpose, what the presentations are, you know, is this one and done? Is it, is it, you know, once a year? Is, what is it?
I got two more quick ones for legal. The other one is if somebody is on a commission and they have, they would like to go visit another commission, is there anything against that?
There is not.
And when they have open, the open spot, the public comments, are they allowed to speak to the public comment about what's going on in their?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I had one more and I can't remember, so I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll watch for your light. All right, Councilmember Dobbie?
Yeah, I just had a couple of clarifications, quick questions. You had in your slide, commissions have staffing. What's the average yearly cost of a staff person to be at each one of those commissions? And you don't have to give it to me now, but part of the cost of a commission is the internal staffing, and it's in the budget, but I don't know what that budget really is, how much.
Please don't make comments for the audience. They're going to be, there's going to be an opportunity. We're conducting a study session. Do not make comments.
I'll give you an answer that you don't like. It depends because, as I mentioned, some of the other commissions are, they have, it's, it's kind of a local preference commission. And so having a, you know, putting together an agenda sometimes is just a matter of putting a one-page thing together versus planning. I mean, we've got over 100, we've got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of grants for, to get stuff before the Planning Commission. So it's, it's, it's tough to say.
I mean, you don't, we don't have to answer it now, but it would be a, a good reference point because we always have commissions come up and say, we need more budget or to do something, which is all fine and dandy. But I'd like to know what the baseline is of what it really costs us to run a commission. I mean, we have staff time and we have all these different things, and I don't know what it is. It'd be nice to have an idea.
Yeah, it's, it's not insignificant.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's got to be a big number. My other question is, why do some of the commissions have even numbers? It would seem that they'd all be odd. And I found it interesting that Steel Lake has four and the other lake management has five, so they can make a decision. And lodging is six. Why isn't it seven? I mean, every time you're in a meeting and you got to make a decision, it seems like you always want an odd number. But maybe that's just a question we could think about. And, and you had your budget of commissions 300,000 to zero. It'd be nice to have it by commission, what the hard dollar is. I mean, I understand lodging tax, 300,000, they spread around. But, you know, there's some budget, Human Services has a budget they work with and.
They, they do. And I hesitate calling it a budget because that's, again, that's typically federal dollars that they advise the council on how to spend. So it's not really their money that they're spending. It's, it's recommendations to the council on how to disperse it in the community. Some of these, some of the money that is, one that comes to mind is like Diversity Commission, where we, where we're trying to fund events. That goes directly towards like a, you know, an event planner or something that we can attract performers to a festival that is directly tied to, to a specific event. And so that's a little different.
And then my last comment is, and, you know, we have meetings, I'll use the example, the Korean Quarterly Meeting. And we've had that for 20 years or 19 or whatever the number is. And that's one type of meeting that I think is, we all have and we all come to and many people. And I'm trying to figure out is, this group, is it trying to be like the Korean Quarterly Meeting where they come once a quarter and get debriefed of what's happening in, from a council in the city? Or is it some other type of meeting that, you know, it's lobbying, I don't know, lobbying the council or lobbying for, you know, the commission? So there's two types of meetings. And I'm not opposed to a meeting like the Korean Quarterly Meeting. It's good to keep our people informed that work with us and advise us. But if it's a different type of meeting, I'm not sure what that is. Those are my comments.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McDaniel?
I, I.
And Councilmember Rhonda?
Yeah, I do have one last question. It's pretty straight to the point. These committees are under the jurisdiction of the council, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, we choose something and it does cost money for the city to fund that operation. How does that, I'm new, this is something new to me. So how does that work out? If we say yes, but then there's a funding obligation for staff to do it, how does that play out?
Well, I think the way it works out, traditionally, we've got staff people here at the city that are assigned to certain departments. And, and the staff person that, in any particular department, whether it's, you know, planning, either in likely CD, or whether it's parks and that person's associated with parks, or whatever the associated person is, that person will, you know, if the staff, if the commission meeting is that night, that person will work that night. And whether they adjust their hours, again, comp time, do you know how it, had, in regard to, for evening meetings for commissions, do we comp time that individual or give them overtime? Or how is that?
It, it depends on what they want. If they want comp time or if they want to flex the hours, it depends on, on the, on the manager. I would also say in answer to Councilmember McDaniel's question, when we created, I think it was the Youth Commission, is that the most recent one we did? There was a, there was a budgetary question with that. And so it, it wasn't just, you know, let's assign it to such and such department and then they'll staff it. It was, okay, we're creating this commission, this is how often they're meeting, this is the staffing requirements for it. And then that was contemplated in the next budget discussion. So if, I mean, this is kind of a big, I mean, we're, we're kind of talking about this generally, but if we're moving forward with this, I think there's a larger discussion about, you know, we're going to be discussing budget in June. So that would be an ideal time to talk about that.
All right, thank you. This could require an FTE to, you know, for, to handle, bring all these people together and handling all this, but we'd have to examine that.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rhonda?
Thank you. Well, we have a chance to speak as council after the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll, I'll wait till that point.
Yep, we built that in.
You're from the public.
Absolutely. Okay, before we hear from the public, Councilmember, do you have anything? Okay, okay, very good. All right, now, thank you, Brian. Let's go ahead and get to the most important part of the meeting, hearing from our members of the public. We've got, why don't I list them out? And if you could be in the queue, ready to go, that'd be great. We've got Jan Barber, Trinise Rogers, Tiersa Idahosa, Saudia Abdullah, Ken Stark, Betty Taylor, Debbie Harvey. So, Ms. Barber first.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and council members. My name is Jan Barber, and I've lived in Federal Way more than 15 years. I like it very much. In looking over different ideas people have had, there's one I would like to lean on. A synchronized calendar by season would be really helpful for us. I wrote down three or four reasons when events are being planned. For example, Town Square Park for the Diversity Commission in August, there are members of the Arts Commission that might be able to assist. When fundraising is occurring, we, we discovered that the Youth Commission was selling gift baskets. And again, as a senior commission, we might have been able to reach out and assist. Volunteer opportunities occur, and I know the Arts Commission a little better, so the Red, White and Blue Festival takes a lot of people to be on hand. And the Arts Explosion, which is coming up, by the way, I hope you all can attend at the end of May and the first couple of days of June. Again, we're going to, we're going to use a lot of resources to hang the artwork and also to. also to assist with just maintaining for the days that the Performing Arts Center is open for that. And for, for some of us, and I'll speak here about the Arts Commission, we actually have art opportunities where there are prizes for artwork that's submitted. And I'm thinking here at least one for $25 and there's one as high as $800 for the traffic graphics wrapping. A Decatur High School student won, if you will, $800 and had his artwork done. But we don't always get the information to the right people. And sometimes the traffic graphic opportunities go with unnoticed. And the more we can get the word out, the more opportunities people might have. The, the other idea I have, because yes, it would be amazing and challenging if 100 people got together, but we do have monthly or bi-monthly combined service, service club meetings. And that's been restarted since the pandemic is over. We, we talk there about what we're doing, what's going on. And I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trinise Rogers.
Hi, good evening. My name is Trinise Rogers and I'm a resident of Federal Way. And so I just wanted to support this previous speaker. There are so many missed opportunities to collaborate and partner among of the commissions. And during a diversity commission meeting a while ago, we had an arts commissioner and that was invited to the diversity commission. She invited us to possibly collaborate in some work. And so those conversations really sparked why we're here today, all these missed opportunities just to support aligned work. During my most recent interview with the city council members, I shared a strong desire to collaborate with fellow city, fellow city commissioners. And so this was like four years ago. So when we were talking about, when we were listening to candidates for commissions and listening to their desires and efforts and why they want to serve the community, I, I'm aware that you all have heard these desires in the past years. In addition to that, during my first appointment, which was years ago, I expressed a desire to have a cultural festival, hence now we have the Flavor of Federal Way, right? Thank you for being responsive to that. During my second appointment, I expressed my desire to see the city celebrate Juneteenth in a meaningful way. Hence, we have the Juneteenth flag raising. And so we're talking about why this is so important and why, and it's why there's so many missed opportunities for commissions to come together on a unified level and how we can really support existing efforts being made. Just understand that it's only to better our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiersa Idahosa.
Hi, I'm glad that we're having this meeting and I want to put my two cents in to state that I do believe that this would be best for the city. And here are the reasons why I believe it. I believe that it would give the city council an opportunity to actually meet the people that you've appointed to do work for you because we're out there talking to the community. And when we send information back to you, if we don't have a way to communicate with you, you don't know what's happening out there like we do because we're kind of on the ground and that's our job to come back and give you that information. So when that doesn't happen that way, we don't know what to do and the city feels like they're not being heard. Also, it gives the county a better opportunity to understand that when we're asking questions, we deserve to have real answers back in a timely manner. That goes back to the people that are asking us questions because they see us out in the community. The other thing is that it would cut down on misinformation, like having people that work for us, work for you, be accused of theft or being accused of being so disruptive people are quitting. Anybody that works, and I'm just speaking mainly for the diversity commission because I'm a diversity commissioner. And we've had, the city council has accused us publicly of stealing money, mismanaging money. They have accused us pub, well, the city government managers and things like that have accused the diversity commissioner, commissioners of having three diversity commissioners quit in less than three years. They only work for us two days a week. So I don't know how we causing all that problem. And then people can make these statements and nobody feels they have to apologize to us. We feel like we're being used, abused and gaslit. And when you're gaslighting somebody, that's a real highly offensive thing. So we work really hard, none of us are paid and that's in every commission. None of us are paid. We actually want to do a good thing for the city and I continue to stand here and say, I absolutely believe that Federal Way has an opportunity to be the city that the world can look at and the city they want to be. And I continue to say that, but it cannot happen if we don't figure out how to work together. We have sent stuff to the commission, they've ignored it. I've talked to some of the commissioners, asked them, did they get our responses? Because I'm in charge of the engagement for, on the engagement committee. We have sent things to the city council, telling you, giving you updates, showing what we're doing, what the committee is, you know, community is saying and things like that. You don't respond. I talked to the commissioners, they say they don't even read it. So we've got to do better. All I'm saying is, we may argue, but that's how we get to conversation. We all love this city, we all want to be here. So please say, even if it's just twice a year, let's figure out how to work together to make the city that we absolutely love work and play in. Thank you.
Thank you. Saadia Abdullah.
Greetings, Mayor Farrell, city council members in this, members of this assembly. My name is Saadia J. Abdullah and I currently serve as the Chair of the Diversity Commission and the Co-Chair of the Civil Service Commission. This question partly came up for the commission to collaborate as a way to make improvements in the city. Currently, the commissions operate in a silo with minimal contact with one another. This can often create duplication of effort and missed opportunities for growth. A bi-annual joint commission meeting of the chairs and co-chairs to discuss important emerging ideas, areas of collaboration will greatly improve our processes and information that we pass along to this council and the mayor. Lastly, this is about a dedicated group of involved Federal Way community members that want to come together for free and work hard as individual commissioners, but as a body for the improvement of the city. So we do want you all to vote to allow us to have a joint commission meeting for the betterment of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Stark.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Ken Stark. I am currently the Chair of the Human Services Commission. I am not speaking for the Human Services Commission, I'm speaking for myself personally. And I, I was a little concerned at first when Brian was giving his presentation that Human Services Commission wasn't mentioned in terms of administering, not administering, but reviewing different grant proposals and that sort of thing and making recommendations to the city council. Because the Human Services Commission does do a lot of work. Currently, we have 84 applications for funding that we are reviewing and will make eventually recommendations back to you. So I want to make sure that everybody up there knew that the Human Services Commission does do a lot of work related to a lot of money, although it's not city money, it is federal money, most of it. My second comment is, I'm not sure I want another meeting. You know, I mean, I agree with everything Brian said about all of those questions. If we're going to have another meeting, what are we going to do? How's it going to be managed? Where are we going to meet? I mean, yeah, it'd be kind of neat to have a meeting once a year with all of the city council and the mayor and all of the commissions. And that way, everybody gets to know each other, but even that could be sort of a pain in the butt managing because it's got so many questions about where are you going to meet and who's going to serve coffee and all that good stuff. So I personally do not want to see another meeting mandated. We have the ability, every single person in every single commission, we have the ability to attend the other commission's meetings and to go talk to those other commissions and ask them to come to our commission. So I think if there are opportunities to do things together, it's on us as commission members, not on you. And I don't want to see another mandated meeting. Please, thank you.
All right, thank you. Betty Taylor.
I have to piggyback on what Ken said. I'm on the Human Service Commission too, and we have a heavy workload that we're working on right now. And this is all we need, is another meeting. All we need is, we're doing enough already. And for us, we always say that we're the hardest working commission because we work hard in what we do. And that, and we don't want, we don't want to burn out. You're going to have too many meetings and, and we, we have a heavy workload right now that we're responsible for. And just to put somebody else on the cake, we would, we would just be burned out. I also wanted to, let me see, okay. When you talk about the, the combined meetings and, and I think about, you know, when it comes time for the commissioner to, what do you call that word, renew or, you know, reapply or whatever, how would that look like? If you, if you combine the commissions, how would, how would that look like if you, when your, when your timeline is up and then you need to reapply? Do you reapply to those two commissions together or, or do you have two separate meetings? And I just wanted to know how that works. But other than that, I am like, like Ken and, and all of us human service commissioners, we're, we're on a tight budget right now, we're on a tight schedule. But we have a mission to do and we'll carry it out. But what other, what other commission would meet with the human service commission if you don't have the same mindset? If we're not working on the same goal? Well, how would that look like? So...
All right, thank you, Betty. Debbie Harvey. And then, one moment, Debbie. After that, we've got Anna Patrick and Gordon Bach.
Hi, Mayor and Council. First of all, at the beginning, listening to all the information that was handed out before public speaking or public comment, my thought was, oh my God, it sounds like a logistic nightmare. How's it, how's it ever going to come together? It just sounds horrible. And I guess I'm here to talk about listening to people that have been up here before me and I'm with the senior commission. I've lived here in Federal Way since 1980. I've been with the senior commission since the beginning and I've learned a great deal. But I think there's still a lot to learn if we collaborate with other commissions. And I think it takes us out of our comfort zone as citizens, being, you know, put in this commission and look at other commissions and what they're doing. What can we learn from them? Maybe they know things that we don't. Maybe we can kind of piggyback off each other of the events that are happening. And one of the things that I thought about that came to mind is our health fair. The senior health fair is coming up here next week. You know, if the Arts Commission had something that they could provide and be a part of and we could use them, great. We had a senior connection meeting at the community center and we invited the Arts Commission to be there and share the art. And so that kind of gave the two commissions something to work towards together. And, and I guess my question too is kind of confusing. Are we talking about all commissioners on all commissions or are we talking about just a representation of some of each? So you don't have to have every commissioner at a meeting. You could maybe have two or three. My next question is, we talk about quorums. If we have two or three from a commission that meets with others and somebody from the commission also wants to join in, can they not join in as a citizen and not representing that commission? So let's say I come as just a private citizen to listen to what the joint commissions have to say. Is that a quorum or is, am I a private citizen just listening in? So that was the other thing I thought about. And as far as another meeting, I mean, we could do it quarterly, we don't have to do it monthly. But I think there is an advantage to maybe picking two or three or having two or three volunteers to say, let's meet, let's collaborate, let's share ideas. What have you guys done that works well for you? What, you know, for us? Can we do something that you've been doing that'll work for us? So I don't think it's rocket science and I don't think we have to make it horribly a logistic nightmare. I think we can make it work. And I've heard a lot of things about why are we doing it and how is it going to happen and the money? But I'd like to hear more of how do we make it work? How do we make a positive out of this? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anna Patrick. And then Gordon Bach.
Hello, everyone. So my comments would be just kind of springboarding off of everybody else as, as far as getting everybody together so that you could share ideas and hear what the other commissions are doing. Really, I think that, that could be done through transparency via the website. I do think that people need to hear more about what the commissions are working on and seeing the schedules that are being planned, that sort of information can be, maybe we, our city can create a platform for that so that that information can be put out there. We don't need to have a meeting with 100 people, I think that's going to water everything down. Some of these commissions are very specific. Planning Commission, we do a ton of work. Human Services Commission does a ton of work and, you know, certain times more than others. But some of the commissions, you know, they're talking about funding, grant funding priorities and other things that enhance the city. And maybe they can get together, you know, the senior commission, diversity commission, you know, there's a lot of tug and pull on how money's going to be spent, what kind of grants we need. I love the idea that was brought up at the city council meeting about the, the program where the city staff gets information about the grants that are out there. And I can see the benefit of, of this sort of thing. But I think it should be, if it's going to be a commission where everybody comes together, it should be more publicized for everybody, for the wide public to see. Really, I think some of these other commissions that people are working on, Human Services Commission, the bigger ones where big decisions are being made should be more transparent. I've thought that a lot along. So that's really all, I, I just think that maybe coming to the council meeting as, you know, the commissions should come and do a presentation for the public. Here's what we're working on. So it should be more transparent. Also, I think we need more data to drive the decisions for the city. And, you know, I speak about this all the time. So good, solid data that tells us what the true needs are of the city so we can make some good, sound decisions that aren't based on emotions or individual desires and silos, decisions made in silo, but really based on what truly the city needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Bach.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell and commissioners. I am in general opposed to a joint commission for the following reasons. For the commissions that I have been on, there's a lot of discussion to make and we have nine members or sometimes less. And even with that, there's a lot of discussion. Takes a long time to get, get to an agreement. Having a commission of commissioners with such a large group, I can't imagine how we'd make a decision. That would, sounds like really long meetings. Again, if this is a public, if this is, if decisions will be made, I do believe this does need to be public and will need to be run like a public meeting, which will create some overhead. And then personally, I'd prefer to not see another mandated meeting. I do work, you know, kind of nine to five, if not more, and one meeting a month is, is sufficient enough. You know, attending another, another meeting, mandatory meeting quarterly may exclude people that do need to work from participating in government. So that might be a little bit more exclusionary than what we want. Now, with that said, I would be in support of a, kind of an annual training event where we could learn kind of best practices and perhaps commission, you know, representatives from the commission could showcase what they've achieved for the last year, what best practices they've learned to share with the group. But this would be an annual and it maybe could bring lunch or ice cream or something to entice people to show up. But, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold that more than annually. And there could even be recognitions or something. But in terms of collaboration, that would be my recommendation. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, that's the last pink sheet I have. Counsel, let's open it up for discussion. These are your commissions and to advise you. So this request had come in to me and once we got that agenda item, I thought we, I really need to get this in front of the council to have this discussion. Uh, Councilor McDaniel? Look like you're...
Yeah, I'll start off. The simple, I think, easy one to do is the synced calendar of what coming events and stuff are coming on. I know that's an easy one for the technology department to help out with. I think that would be an easy one for us to, to at least have a starting stone to, to kind of agree on. I've been going to a couple of the committees and the commissions and just kind of getting a vibe for how they're running, how what's going on with them. And then I've also talked to a few people who are in the commissions and there is some, some pros and cons to this, this group meeting. I like the idea of the Korean Quarterly concept where it's coming out and discussing what is coming up and allowing to be more open for the public. I do know that when I look at what we do have for commissions, I don't see a lot of them having the interconnection like the arts or the parks or the diversity commissions where they might have some overlapping ideas or things that could help each other out. where they might have some overlapping ideas or things that could help each other out, especially the arts. I feel the arts is the one that's kind of connected to everybody because it's intertwined with everybody's lives in that way. But I do know there is some possibilities where they can actually go currently to the meetings and get some of that stuff going. So just to start it off, I like the idea of a synced calendar. I do like an idea of maybe a quarterly, a semi-annual, more of like the Korean Quarterly where we do have them come out and present what is going on and give us feedback. And I do support them actually interacting with each other. Either it's through the current way, which they do have a legal way of doing it, or if we put something together. But I am for some more collaboration between some of these committees. I just don't believe all the commissions that are out there really are going to want to be there nor need to be there for the most part. So I'll start off with that.
All right, thank you. Counselor Mr. Stefan Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also support what Councilmember McDaniel says.
See, it's not just me.
Okay, sorry. And to add to what he said, I think the quarterly, the quarterly meeting, if we were to do something like that, then I would love to see each commission member take one of those slots, maybe two or three commission members, and explain or share with the rest what they're doing, how they're doing, where they need help. Because as much as we want to believe that people are connected and they can go to other commission meetings, because of lack of time, people don't. But if there's one space that people could come together to do it, I don't think it's mandatory. I don't think anyone said it was going to be mandatory. So for those who can make it and it's convenient for, I think, again, it's about transparency, about learning about each other and what everybody's doing. But also, I think, like Planning Commission does so much work around a lot of very key zoning issues, for instance, for our city, and I don't think other commission members are even aware unless it's presented here at city council meeting where they're either tuning in to listen or sit here to watch the meeting. So I really, I do support what you're saying, but having it maybe on a quarterly basis and maybe one commission staff can take that on instead of having all the staff members that staff the different commissions. It could be that one department may take on that. So I don't think it's, it requires a lot. And I think Brian answered that question around time, how they're compensated. It's either it's a comp time or changing their work schedule. But I really believe this is a step forward and a very helpful and transparent and useful tool for people to come together. People who want to serve the community are not on the council but still doing very, very supportive role for our city and the council, I think. I really want to see this happen.
All right. Counselor Walsh and Counselor Honda.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think that it's great that we're having this discussion this evening and there's some very legitimate concerns being presented. And I think that the, what we need to work on is how to best address those concerns. Because there are some very, very legitimate concerns. With some of the different commissions, there's definitely some overlap in what they're working on. I'm thinking particularly with arts, diversity, parks and senior commissions, with those four in particular. And there may be others as well where there's some overlap. And so there, it would be good to have better coordination between them. I believe that, you know, I really don't think that a, an everybody-together meeting would probably be the best way to accomplish that. But we do need to accomplish that, that coordination. One, having the calendar, a joint calendar, I think that that's very good, very, very critical where all of the commissions can take a look and see what's going on with the other commissions. I think that that's, to me, that's a given and that should happen. Also, encourage commissioners to attend other commission meetings. You know, I mean, that's a great idea and something that should be encouraged and be able to have, you know, three minutes or maybe even with, if there's particular things going on, expand the time allotted for a bigger presentation on things that do correlate between the different commissions. Also, as we were, as people were talking, I was thinking that there was concern that some of the work of the commission is not getting to the council. And perhaps, instead of a Korean Quarterly-type meeting, perhaps on a quarterly basis, give each commission the opportunity, if they want, to have a five or 10-minute presentation to the council on a quarterly basis. Just an idea. And if, you know, maybe a special meeting like what we're having now or the regular council meeting, if it were a special meeting like now, perhaps have it so that all of the commissions are presenting that at the same time and so that all the commissions know that, hey, they can come and hear what's going, what's going on, what the other commissions are doing. Just some ideas there. But I think that there are some very real concerns. There needs to be better coordination. There needs to be a calendar. There needs to be good communication. Communication is the key. And it's a matter of how to implement that communication. You know, personally, I think that, you know, getting 100 people in the room all at once, hey, back in Washington DC, there's a very big committee that has 100 members. It takes them the whole year to accomplish not much of anything. So anyway, so what 100 people are going to do in an hour or two or three one evening could be problematic. So those are my thoughts.
All right, thank you. Counselor Honda.
Thank you. So as a council member who is on two commissions and who chaired two commissions, I want to thank all of our commissioners because we have over 100,000 people in our city and we have a handful of people who volunteer to be on volunteer commissions. So thank you. And I know that you don't volunteer for, you volunteer because you want to change the city, you want to be part of the city. And that's really important. So thank you very much for stepping up and being part of helping form the city and helping us get done what needs to be done for the people who live and work here. I have for years wanted to have a yearly meeting for commissioners because I think commissioners need not just to get together to share what they're doing, but to also have some training. We have, every year, our commissions go through training on ethics and legal issues. That could be done at a large-size meeting and save perhaps staff time from going to every commission to do that. I think sharing your work plans and coming up with a consistent work plan. We had that issue this last year of council asking for consistent work plans so that we know what, it's easier for us to read it and it's easier for commissions and staff to put those together if they're in a consistent form. So that could be part of the training. I think retreats are important. I disagree with our city administrator. I was on commissions that did retreats. And I think retreats are important because retreats give a time to get away from the one to two-hour commission meeting, which could be once a month or once every three months or once every six months or only when necessary because not all commissions meet on a regular basis. It gives you a time to learn to work with each other and to get to know each other better and really to come up with the goals that you want to come up with. I think retreats are important. The council does a retreat. I think commissions, I think it's important. Reporting to council, as Councilmember Walsh said, I think it was last year or the year before, I had suggested to our city clerk that we have a commission report monthly to the council, stand here and report on what they did if they wanted to. That didn't happen for a lot of reasons, but I still think that that is something that could be done. And in fact, I believe that we have in some commissions that we do require yearly reporting. So it could be great to do it. And not only would it inform council, but it would inform the public of what you're doing because the public doesn't even know that some of you exist. And they should know you exist because you're doing a lot of work for the city. I think every commission's work is important. I know that we've heard, well, this commission does really hard work and this commission does really hard work. You all do hard work. You all step up and you do the work that's needed and I thank you for that. And so thank you for volunteering. Thank you for being here and thank you for stepping up for the city of Federal Way.
All right, thank you. Counselor President Kochmar.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. Well, let me just reiterate some of the things I've heard this evening. I've heard that we want to synchronize calendars, it's a great idea, that we need to collaborate. I've heard that we have duplication of effort. We certainly don't want that. Certainly don't want misinformation and we definitely don't want to have anybody feel abused, although just to let you know, we feel abused at times, too. So it kind of goes with the job. But we've heard some people say they want another meeting. There are some people who say, gee, we want quarterly meetings and some people who say maybe an annual meeting. We've talked about grants, transparency, more data. We've talked about an annual training event. Some people have talked about whether this should be a voluntary group meeting. Should it be everybody or just two or three people from each commission? So there's a lot of, a lot of aspects here that we're not going to settle tonight. So the mayor and I and leadership, which is Han, Commissioner Trent, discussed up here a little bit about maybe having an ad hoc committee where we could have a meeting to discuss all of these issues, particularly how this would be run and how often, and then come back to you with the results of the ad hoc committee. And so since the council, we set agendas. So I get to set the agenda. And so just to let you know, if you would like to be on an ad hoc committee, I'd like to have two members of our council and two members of our commissioners, not from the same commission, separate, different commissions, who would volunteer to be on an ad hoc committee to discuss the particulars and the parameters and then come back and then have another special meeting where we could present it to you and see if you're all comfortable with that. So on the council, since we will appoint somebody, if you don't volunteer, I'm going to, oh, good, I've already got a volunteer. We're doing good. So, and if you have, please, I'm easy to get ahold of, let me know. Just email me, come talk to me at any time. And if you'd like to be on the ad hoc committee and if you want to be on it and you want more than just two from the commission, let me know that, too. And so let's put something together and not to have a lot of meetings, just one or two meetings. I don't think it's going to take a lot of meetings because a lot of this is legal issues. And so we can try and nail this down and then have a special meeting coming up.
So Counselor President, were you thinking, including you plus two, so three council members?
And that's fine if that's.
And then maybe, what about three commission?
And that would be good. So now we're at three and three.
And then with a quick, with a short leash to come back.
Apparently, that's what I'm doing. So we're good.
I do have.
Okay, we've got, who, I'm sorry?
Okay, so the, before we go, I'm going to look for a motion here in just a moment. We've got Counselor Murphy, he's got his slide on.
You know, as I've been listening, this kind of reminds me over the years, again, I think the Korean Quarterly meeting that we have is kind of a framework and been something we've been doing for years. But years ago, we used to have, when I was mayor, we had the community meetings where once a quarter, we'd go to a school and the whole citizens would show up and we'd have a discussion, just like the mayor's been doing. The other day, we had one in Olympic View. I kind of view this meeting, if we're going to have one, more of a meeting like that where there's an agenda of here's what's happening. And then maybe on the agenda, the commission, one or two at a time, you know, give a briefing and everybody gets to mingle and meet each other. And then you try it out once and see if it works and if it doesn't, nobody comes or the council doesn't show up, you kill it. I mean, there's no reason to have a meeting to have meetings. And we all know that. We heard that from out here. But I think it's wise that we connect the citizens that are volunteering on commissions that we appoint and connect with the council so that there's a better connection maybe than we have, not that I don't think we have a bad one, and make it more like those ad hoc meetings we've had in the year or like the organized Korean Quarterly meeting, which it's every quarter. I'm not suggesting every quarter, maybe twice a year, but I don't want to have meetings, just have meetings.
Hey, Counselor, what do you think, just in regard to, what do you think about an ad hoc committee? And let me throw this out to have a discussion on this. What do you think about an ad hoc committee to work out some of these details, whether it's that or whether it's something more?
I mean, you can have as many ad hoc meetings as you want. I would rather say, pick a date, do it, see what happens. Why meet to meet to figure out how to meet? I mean, just get together.
I think if you have an ad hoc committee meeting and you have council on it, at least one council member on that ad hoc committee should have served on a commission. Because unless you've served on a commission, you really don't understand as much as you could, in my opinion.
All right. Okay, Counselor Mr. Stefan Dawson.
And I think the ad hoc committee should also or would be able to come up with the parameters that we're talking about because right now, there's no guidelines for these meetings. So I think that would be a good place to start.
Yeah, what we were careening, before I brought you guys in for assistance, what we were careening toward is, I don't know what. I mean, we were really like, what are we, what are we doing? And what last thing we want to do is throw a bunch of people in a room and say, here you go. I mean, you do want to be thoughtful about it.
Well, maybe you throw a bunch of people in the room and they'll go, well, this is dumb, let's not do it again.
Okay.
Counselor President, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I, well, in order to keep it without having quorums, so we have a problem with the quorum, I think we need to keep the members of the council. And thank you, I've already got five volunteers from the council. I'd like to keep it to three people on the council and we'll fight it out amongst each other. And then three members of any commission, one, not the same commission, let me know and then we'll set a meeting that's doable for everybody. Okay, we good with that? I'd like to make a motion.
And then Brian would facilitate that. Brian Davis would facilitate that, make sure we had staff. And we, you know, we meet in a conference room here and at least hammer out some ideas to bring back. Counselor Member Honda.
I'm a little confused. So only, so we have, what, 14 commissions? And you'd only have three members from those 14 commissions?
When you have a meeting, okay, so I.
Well, I understand you don't want a lot of people, but my suggestion would be that you'd have someone from each commission who meets on a monthly or more regular basis, not the commissions who meet, like the Ethics Commission doesn't meet very often. You know, some of them don't meet hardly at all. But the ones who meet parks, diversity, seniors, arts, human services, at least, well, that's only, that's workable.
You should keep your meetings under nine people total.
Well, that would be.
So if you have six and three, that would work. But.
But I think that you need to get a broad representation of.
And I understand that.
Let me, before, let me go back just parliamentary-wise. The Counselor President made a motion.
I haven't made it yet.
I second the motion.
Actually.
Oh, you want to make?
No, no.
Nope, I haven't gone to it yet.
Actually, go ahead and make the, once you make the motion.
Okay, and then if we want to amend it.
Yeah, actually, I contemplated, contemplating the remarks of Counselor Member Honda.
And that's fine, too. So my motion initially was three and three to meet at a mutually accepted time. So that's the motion at the moment and seconded. Okay, and now there's an amendment.
A friendly, would you consider that a friendly amendment?
Of course.
All right.
As long as we don't go over nine people. Because nine in a group is too much.
So Stephanie, do we have, just as a point of information here, with the, with the commissions that meet monthly or more than quarterly, how many, how many, how many is that?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Yeah, I don't know. I can look into it and see.
Okay, but the idea is to keep it at six, right? So would you, is that acceptable, six?
So as Councilmember McDaniel just has a list for us, the youth commission does meet quite often, but youth are in school and I wouldn't, you know, I, as much as we value their opinion, I wouldn't expect that they would serve on this. So parks, diversity, seniors, arts, human services is what I can think of.
What about planning?
Oh, planning, yeah, I didn't.
That's six.
Yeah, that's six.
That's six.
So that would be nine.
Are you guys taking this down?
I don't know why nine's the magic number, but that would be nine.
It can.
She's the mover of the motion.
No, that, it's in group, that's.
Group 10, okay.
Dynamics, that's the way it works.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. The mover considered it a friendly amendment to have representation from six commissions or at least six commissions. And I think we've.
So let me reiterate, we've got parks, arts, human services. And let me reiterate, we've got parks, arts, human services, planning, seniors, and diversity.
That's six.
That's six.
We miss anybody, anybody? Okay, all right. So there's been a motion, a second, any discussion. Councilmember McDaniel, I see your...
My only caveat is, can we just approve the calendar aspect of it?
Well, we're going to take care of the calendar. Let me say this, as a, as a commitment from my office, we're going to accomplish a synchronized calendar.
I'll take that as a win, then.
It is, you can take that to the bank. Brian, well, well, maybe what we do is we get, Bill, Bill Vidino is in the back of the room, I, I sense a new responsibility, that we need to have a synchronized calendar. Now, in the manner in which you want that delivered, and put on a website, or communicated, we'll, we, we need to get that done, that's, that's low-hanging fruit.
Mayor, can I just mention one more thing?
Yeah.
I do believe Human Services said that they were overburdened at the moment. I don't want to have anybody feel that you have to come.
Right.
Well, it's just open, open-ended, in case you want to have somebody from, from your group come.
And no judgment, you know, it's a reflection.
No judgment at all. We'll, we'll shoot for a total of nine people, but if you can't make it, that's fine.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, a commitment, that we're going to get a synchronized calendar. Councilmember McDaniel, did you have any other?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Since you only want three people on the council, I'm willing to step away from it.
Yeah, I've got Honda, Tran, McDaniel, myself, and Lydia.
And we don't need to make that write-up, you know?
No, no, I, we'll talk it out.
Very good. Okay, is there any further discussion on that? An ad hoc committee to be able to talk about the, the spectrum of possibilities, be it, you know, a, a Korean Quarterly meeting, all the way to, you know, quarterly meeting, and, and to be determined?
Or it could be annual, or it could be semi-annual.
Well, whatever the, yeah. So is there any further discussion on this issue? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? The matter passes unanimously. All right, great discussion. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you to all the commissioners for all of your work. We very much appreciate it, and know how much work it is, and how much energy you put in for the citizens of this community. All right, with that, we are adjourned, and we will resume our full City Council meeting[1781.83]